Thank you.
Thank you.
That ends up being all. Um, it's on, yeah. Liz, if you do the white. Oh, it's already off, okay. And then on the podium that has to be on, I think we're good now. Thanks Scott.
We're talking barrier under local.
So anyway, there's, uh, the public house is the one situation where there's no barrier, there's no fence. And that's local jurisdiction, whether the council wants to require a barrier, however, as I said, I have not had any, receive any complaints or concerns from last year.
Okay. I, I think if it hasn't been an issue until it becomes, once it made a perfect, if it does become an issue, then we can address it at that point, but I don't think it. We're having any issues.
Not growing.
Yeah. All right, well, do we have a motion to consent the agenda? One second. All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Arlier?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Way ahead.
Yes.
All right, takes us down to the fire department, uh, report, we, uh, there will be an agency meeting in a couple of weeks. Uh, coming with, uh, with that, uh, there are a few open spots on the department as well, I believe there are some interviews, correct Greg? And I think the, the gang is keeping pretty busy with that, I don't know, if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, I haven't. I should listen. It's been a big ride breakfast coming up every month. Three thousand are our best friend in town. You know, also interesting, John, the weekend's coming up and pole bicycle rides coming up. We will be ready to go in case we are needed.
All right, appreciate everything you guys do. Uh, sheriff's report, anything for?
Oh, I have a comment.
Uh, public works report, Scott?
Yep. We are extremely overwhelmed and busy, busy overwhelmed. Uh, right now we're working on dugouts for diamonds three and four, uh, diamonds one and two got, uh, got redone, uh, new infield material reshaped. And, uh, so we're hoping to get these dugouts put out here in the next week, week and a half. Mowing is, is, uh, our best friend right now, kind of. And I'm sure every resident in town has the same problem going on with, with. Sledge hauling was completed week and a half ago. The DNR came out yesterday and actually brought some, some stocking, well, blue gills and, large mouth bass to our pond that we redid down at the SRNA. Brought, uh, adult male and females of both species and, uh, said that they'll help us out. We need more, so that was great. Uh, want to remind everybody about the Grand Gable Bike Event this Saturday. We can see up to five hundred riders come into Solon. We will have some message boards put up on three eighty-two and also, um, westbound traffic on, this three hundred million street just warning people what they may encounter. Also like to acknowledge, um, May fifth through eleventh is National Drinking Water Week. And Solon's Public Works staff, their expertise and dedication form the backbone of our water system. Uh, their commitment to water quality standards and operational excellence contributes significantly to the health and economic prosperity of our community. Just so you know, all of the Solon Public Works staff, Dave Richards, Tim Stahl, Chris Richardson, Nathan Speck, and Ryan Stevel are all certified either with grade one and grade two, uh, Iowa State certifications. And, uh, those grades go up to a grade four. So, that's all I have.
Thanks. All right, please, why were you going?
Yes, uh, May, lots of fun things happening on this Saturday, we have May the fourth be with you at ten thirty, lots of fun activities geared around Star Wars in the meeting room. And then at one o'clock, we have Talking Tea with Judith Levitt. She is a tea expert, has created a tea periodic table. Also written a book, which we have in our collection, so come and learn about tea and try some samples, that'll be at one o'clock on Saturday. Um, next week, on the ninth, we have our quarterly intergenerational storytime, which we host at the Solon Retirement Village. So Lily actually goes and brings the storytime there and the public is welcome to bring their littles or just come and enjoy that time. That is at ten thirty on Thursday the ninth. On Saturday, the eleventh, we have a Smash Brothers tournament for teens. Um, that will be in the meeting room from two to four, registration is required, just so we know we've got enough, um, I guess, controllers and whatever else you need to play Smash Brothers, so that is on Saturday, the eleventh. Um, and then we will be having our summer reading kickoff party on Thursday, May thirtieth, which is the last day of school. We will be closing the building at five and our kickoff party will start outside at five thirty. And part of that is thanks to Bee Days funding our request to be able to purchase our own phone machine, so come and enjoy the phone. All ages welcome and you can pick up your reading materials and get ready to start summer reading.
Thanks. City Engineering Report, Dave?
Yeah, good evening, a few things to go over for updates, Trail Ridge, part two, they've been working on getting this upgrade ready. And, uh, just need the weather to cooperate a little bit so it dries out and we can put the rock down and get ready for paving. Uh, all of the utilities are in. Uh, Trail Ridge, part three, P and Z, looked at preliminary plat for that last night, that should be coming to council at the next meeting and, uh, take a look at that, that's a small part that they want to try to, uh, get wrapped in with the, uh, the lower portion. Uh, Chablon Elm Water Main, we did some hydro seeding yesterday on that project, uh, working on a few bear spots, try to get things cleaned up on that project and get that closed out, so that's pretty close to being complete. And then on the wastewater plant, uh, we're working with equipment vendors yet to try to get information and cost from them on different pieces of equipment for our various proposals that we need to, uh, put into our analysis. To try to get that to DNR in our anti degradation, uh, report. Uh, we're also working to try to get something set up to do some site visits to look at the bio solids handling, uh, looking at West Liberty and maybe a couple of other communities, uh, to see how they handle the sludge. And, uh, as soon as we get dates on that, Scott and, you know, Cammy and I will probably be doing another trip for that, that's what I have.
Thanks Dave. Moving down to the Declaration of May as older American months, we have props. Oh, city attorney, sorry.
That's okay, you knew I was gonna say.
I bet you'll do some talking in a little bit.
Why don't you?
Yeah. All right, uh, the Declaration of May as older American months, as older Americans' month, uh, the proclamation that we have is whereas the city of Solon is home to citizens aged sixty years old and older, whose experiences and wisdom connect us to the past and help us meet the challenges of the future. And whereas the older citizens of the city of Solon are representative of an unprecedented trend in the nation's demographic makeup. And whereas older persons are diverse, respected citizens who continue to contribute to our nation's social and economic wellbeing as they live longer, healthier, and more productive lives, many even starting second careers. And whereas Americans grow older, each community must strive to understand and address the evolving challenges and needs of our older citizens and the people who care for them. And whereas the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead require us to think differently about health and long-term care and work together to ensure that older Americans can age strong life, or strong, long, and with dignity, and whereas the city of Solon wishes to join in the celebration to honor the seniors of Johnson County and to encourage them to age strong, live long. Now therefore, I Dan O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Solon, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-four as older American month, older Americans' month. That moves us down to the seniors of the year, so Marilyn and Denny Hanson are here tonight, uh, they are joining, uh, twenty-five that, uh, came before them. With that, and we know that their involvement in the community spans decades with that, so I'll hand it over to Sandy.
Well, we thank the city council for this venue for recognizing older Americans' month. And we have done this quite a few years since two thousand and six. So our current couple, Marilyn and Denny Hanson. And with these certificates, which signify all the things you've done for our community, et cetera. And that's a better place for it, we thank the both of you. Now, a further thing, there will be an open house at the American Legion when we, May twenty-second from four to six. And lastly, pay attention, Ryan, in the Bee Days Parade.
All right, uh, we have like other, a couple of other important weeks coming up, so May fifth through eleventh, we do have Municipal Clerks Week, uh, as well honoring suit there. Uh, May tenth through the sixteenth, we have the National Police Week. And the nineteenth through twenty-fifth, Public Works Week. Down to, uh, old business, uh, we have the ordinance number four eighty-three, amending chapters fifty and sixty-nine parking regulations, uh, this is the second reading.
I would rather react. Last meeting when we talked about this order, it's quite a bit, but Duncan, Arlier asked the board to buy something and I added this to the language. We started knowing orders, that this subsection doesn't apply to commercial facilities that are legally operated in the city under, I was looking to say, so anything like three million. Perfect, that is added even here, so the second reading would be the amendment, amended ordinance with that, that's actually giving point oh two sub fifteen. Great, that was the only change that, uh, made.
Thank you for checking that, I appreciate it. And with the amendment, is it still good to have it be the second reading sensor will still be another one?
Amendment, either any meeting, so.
Okay. All move to approve ordinance four eighty-three.
One second.
Uh, we have Duncan?
Yes.
Arlier?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Way ahead.
Yes.
All right, that takes us down to, uh, new business, the purchase agreement of one twenty-one North Dubuque Street.
Okay, I'll talk on this one again, this is, uh, one twenty-one Dubuque, third room street, this is the last property in that area that, uh, uh, they, they put it up for sale with a realtor, we went back.
We, we approached them.
Yeah, go ahead, you wanna go ahead?
No, no.
Okay, no, I was just gonna go through the agreement, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar purchase price and, uh, closing would happen, you know, on or before August first and, they get to keep some plants outside and, you know, they want to take the dryer with them since we're not, we don't really have a use for the house, then I, that probably, we don't have any issue with that. No.
Comments, questions? The purchase. All move to approve with purchase agreement of one twenty-one North Dubuque Street.
Oh.
Back to, all right, Duncan?
Yes.
Arlier?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Way ahead.
Yes.
All right, that takes us down to the fiscal twenty-four, third quarter, quarter financial update.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so what we're gonna do is we're just gonna, third quarter is as of March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, for those of you who don't know Travis Schmidt, our new finance officer, um, he started, uh, in April and, um, he, uh, does Doug write in, he's been helping with the budget amendment, he's been helping put, pull these reports together. Um, so he's been a great asset in the few weeks that he's been here, um, obviously has, uh, a knack for this kind of numbers thing, so I've really appreciated that. And he's helped put a lot of this information together and I'm gonna present it here briefly. Um, just to kind of give, uh, the council just an overview of where we're at, um, as of the third quarter. So for revenues, uh, overall, we're sitting at about twenty-six percent, which is where we should be three, three fourths into the year. Uh, my general fund, we are a little over, um, uh, we're at, um, um, I'm sorry, we're still waiting for, we're a little under where we should be, but the reason for that is because our property taxes are paid in, uh, September and March, so we won't get, uh, as of the, the time of this report, March thirty-first, we hadn't gotten, that, that big payment that we get and we get those twice a year, so it's not reflected on here. So knowing that we now have received that, and it'll be updated, um, for the fourth quarter, no concern there in revenues. Um, the other thing we like to watch on our revenues is our water and our sewer utility to make sure that the water bill, uh, revenues that we're receiving. Um, as you recall, water and sewer proprietary funds, they don't receive general fund money, so they need to be self-supporting. And that's why it's really important that those water and utility rates are set and when we budget that we are, um, we're, you know, hitting those, hitting those marks, uh, we budgeted, uh, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, and five hundred dollars in water utility. Um, and we are, um, Travis and I did some numbers this afternoon, we feel pretty confident we're gonna hit that, uh, easily. Uh, we're gonna have two more for sure full, uh, months, we're gonna receive revenue, it's a little, you know, flushy.
Thank you.
July's a little difficult to budget because the technically those June bills aren't due till July fifteenth, so we might get some in, but we don't really add that into our calculation, but we feel pretty confident we're gonna hit our mark, there for our revenues and same with sewer, we're sitting in a really good position, so we, uh, feel good that we're gonna be able to hit those budgeted revenues for both of those. Um, as you look through the, the charts behind the revenue recap, um, what you see, uh, is a glimpse with yellow, as, uh, last year at this time and green this year at this time. Um, so just to have some comparison, just to see, it's just a quick visual on some of our, um, kind of what we consider key, uh, departments and line items that we track, um, just to make sure, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're right where we should be and this is just a nice little quick ad glance that we like to provide. When it comes to the expenses, uh, we're at about fifteen percent, we, we have about fifteen percent left. Um, however, you know, with three months left of the fiscal year, um, we're not concerned. Um, and the reason for that is because we have had some major purchases this year, bought property for this little plant, we brought other property. Um, and those are gonna be handled in a budget amendment at the next meeting. Uh, we'll be presenting the budget amendment, which will incorporate those, uh, unexpected expenses or out of the ordinary expenses that we had in budgeted eighteen months ago. We didn't realize, you know, for sure when we would close on some of these properties. So you'll see these numbers change for the next meeting. Um, but as of the thirty-first of March, uh, this is a glimpse of where we were before the budget amendments. And you'll see, you'll see those, um, adjustments made at the next meeting on May fifteenth. Uh, some things that, uh, have come up unexpectedly is we had a siren repair. Um, the library had some radon repairs and, and was working on some parking lot updates. Um, the, uh, the dugouts and, uh, um, at the, uh, park and, at the Rec and Nature area, um, got some upgrades. Uh, some of that was budgeted, some of it was not, another thing that skews our general fund is you'll recall that the community center, uh, the utilities there are pretty crazy, um, the city is only accountable for thirty-five thousand dollars of that annually. However, we'll fill the entire amount and then we're reimbursed by both the school and Jordan Creek, so it does skew our general fund a little bit because of that. Um, and then you'll also notice that financial administration, we had three hundred and ninety-five thousand budgeted and we spent one million, three hundred and thirty-eight. And that's because we've had these property purchases that have happened and it's just, um, from a chart of accounts standpoint, it doesn't make sense for us to create a, a line item for a one-time event. So we have to find line items within our financial administration, uh, chart of accounts, to use those for these unexpected, and that's what you're seeing under financial administration, that's why that looks so lopsided. And you'll see next, at the next meeting where we have adjusted through a budget amendment process to account for those unexpected expenses. Um, so our general fund, while it shows that we've overspent by twenty-eight percent, that will be corrected with the budgeting process. Um, under, uh, the other funds, um, notables, um, the TIP and the, um, debt service on the recap for expenses. Um, those, those are also a little bit skewed because when we have bond payments, all bond payments have to be paid out of debt service. But the money's coming in through other places and those are end of the year transfers, so again, it does skew things on paper just a little bit. The, uh, under capital improvements, um, the Chablon Elm project is being, uh, managed out of capital projects, however, we did, and we're at, uh, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that project. However, you'll recall, we received four hundred and two thousand dollars from ARPA. That will also be an end of the year transfer and as soon as we wrap that project up, which hopefully will be by the end of the year, it sounds like from date, we just do that one transfer for the whole project. And, um, unexpected expenses in water utility, of course, was well four, which was down for several months, we do have an insurance claim on that, however, we have not received any funds to date. So for now, we're gonna, um, treat that as an unexpected expense until that, you know, till we hear back from the next company. Um, so overall, um, the things that, you know, look a little upset, we have, we know, there's an explanation for them. Um, as you look at the, uh, chart, you'll see the blue is shown, uh, for last year and the peach color is this year. And, um, I would say that in general fund, um, it's just a timing, we're gonna get those property taxes in and then we'll be right on track. Financial administration is looking a little lopsided, but that's because of those major purchases. And then under roadway, roadway, roadway maintenance general, so we have roadway maintenance generally, we have roadway maintenance, road use, I know it's confusing, um, unexpected expenses are obviously the expenses with the, um, the ash trees. We also have sidewalk replacement, uh, as you'll recall, we have, uh, the town divided into five sections for sidewalk repairs. Each year we do a section, letters go out to residents, um, notifying them of repairs that need to be made. So the city go ahead and pays the repairs and then we then invoice, um, residents who want the city to make their repairs on their behalf. So while that's showing as an unexpected expense, we are getting offset back for that. And then, um, we also, uh, one of the other notables in roadway maintenance is, we are, um, we, last year, at this time, we spent three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, this year we've spent five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um, that's because we just had bigger equipment schedules for this year, last year, we had, um, the LEVAC, we had the Gator, and what was the other?
Dump truck.
So we had, we just larger expenses, larger equipment, and of course, we follow that equipment schedule. Um, and then underwater utilities, yeah, when you look at that graph, you'll also see kind of a skewed look compared to last year and a good part of that is those well repairs. Uh, final pages of the report are the investment report. And this report shows, um, the cash, uh, accounts for the city, which equal a little over nine million dollars. Uh, we have three accounts, uh, two checking and one savings account. And then we have the CDs which are listed at two point six million dollars. We, if you recall, we moved another million dollars of local option sales tax money into CDs in December. And that's because that was at Northland Securities Recommendation, we know that money's being held for the new sewer plant, but it might as well use some, earn some more better interest while we're waiting because, you know, we're, we're a good year away from, um, really, having that full design and having a good idea what the costs are, so that's a total of nine point six two four million dollars. And then the next page with the pie chart is, um, this really just shows how liquid we, we are, we, we have that balance of, making sure that we are, uh, being good stewards of the city dollars, that we're investing them and getting a good rate of return, however, we also have the, responsibility of being able to, um, sur- survive a disaster, have access to the funds if needed. So this shows that we have seventy-three percent of our funds on demand, one point, uh, one five percent in the one to three months, four point six, uh, or four to six months is five, about five and a half percent, and you can see as the scale goes on, that's just our out of glance. So we know where we're at at any given time, if we needed to access the money, we do have good relationships with all of the banks that we have CDs with. And, and know that we can, uh, access those funds in an emergency if needed without penalty. Um, so overall, I think that, um, we've had, uh, a really, uh, we've had some unexpected purchases, but overall, uh, for third quarter, I'm feeling that we're in a, a really solid position to end out the year on track. And again, next, at the next meeting with that budget meeting, it'll kind of all come together, um, and give us, set us on pace to end the year. Um, and, and be within our budgeted amounts.
Think, uh, the word on time is.
The word of honor is when we have it, when we take the approach that, that you folks take along with the council I have served on, they have monies available to be able to take advantages of some purchases that we have here lately is really important. You know, it's not, it's not always when you have the advantage to uh purchase some property back here where we know that we want to develop that along with our master plan and everything. And have the wherewithal to be able to take advantage when those things do come up. Uh that's why we have the kind of, you know, what I call surplus, but just good financial management that we can take advantage of those things.
Yeah.
And I think we overlook that way too often. Uh when you guys are doing your work and we're doing our budgeting and that kind of thing, that allows us to uh to step up and and take advantage sometimes. And I think we have.
As always, thank you for your diligence and your work on these and making it in our format that's easily adjustable and understandable.
Uh you're welcome. You have to make the hard decision. That's our job, to provide you the information to make those hard decisions. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, that moves us down to other business. So with uh council committees, uh Streets wrapped up a meeting uh before the start of the meeting or before the council meeting. Uh doesn't anything from the Streets meeting?
We'll follow through at the next council.
Sounds good. Uh no update from utilities? Uh Finance met about a week ago on a TIF application.
Yeah, we're still in discussion. Um and I think we're gonna have a brief meeting following this meeting. To uh the, the question was that we kind of left with more questions that needed answered. And I've consulted with Kevin, and I think we're just gonna briefly talk about it, the meeting, what some options are. And that, this is regarding the TIF application for the Harpers.
Uh personnel, no updates, building needs, drilling, same. Uh Police Committee, we had a meeting uh Monday night uh with Sheriff. Uh I'm just talking through more contracting, so I thought that went pretty well. The other night. Uh and the city school meeting, uh it's EWD. Uh we did talk last week about doing another joint uh meeting with the school board and our council as well. Uh City Clerk, Seuss, anything? Jamie?
Uh we get him live, welcome Travis. It's been a, a good impact and shortening here. Um really have enjoyed getting to know him. Um he's been a, a, a big part of helping get the owl ready and just um, and he's got it. Just uh, you know, uh bringing his expertise. Um we've enjoyed getting to know him, enjoyed having him in the office and put the cord to working with him for a long time. Um also wanted to thank and acknowledge Beef Days for um their um contributions uh at the last meeting. The um they contributed nine thousand dollars to the, to complete the three and four dugouts. Uh they contributed five thousand dollars for the replacement of trees that Scott requested. Uh and they contributed seven hundred and fifty dollars towards music funding, so very important to them to have. Um you know, for the city to be able to be the recipient of some of those, um you know, a lot of the hard-working sweat that goes in and fun that goes on Beef Days. And, and then finally, I just wanna say what a blast the Herky on Parade has been. And I also want to thank Scott, because he's really done all the work behind the scenes. Um he's been the one going and uh working with the, working with the Streets Committee to the, figure out where the herpes are gonna go, get these bases done, get these herpes set. Um so he's really the one that's done all the work. So we're gonna thank somebody, thank Scott. Uh it's been super fun to be a part of. I'm really excited to have the Herkies on Parade here in Solon.
Council comments?
It was quite the assembly team last night.
Alright, uh moved down to Mayor comments. I was gonna just say it's awesome having six of them in town. I feel like we're pretty uh fortunate to have six in town. Again, there's a lot of work to, to make that happen. So thanks um Scott for giving the guys with that. And one other one, on April, we did celebrate uh a milestone here where Kami officially had ten years as our city administrator. I know that her time with the city is far beyond ten years uh between time as clerk, council, as mayor, as interim. With that, but uh we have great staff here. And the makings of a great staff and a great team is great leadership. And we're very lucky to have you uh behind the wheel for us. So thank you for everything that you do, or stay in and day out.
You are a very tall converter.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Kami.
The mole and the off.
Alright, that takes us down uh to motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
The opposed? Alright.
Someday, somebody's been saying that.